Okay, everyone. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 25th. Introductions and announcements, Mayor Protem.
Well, I thought you'd never ask. Well, good news. We have a new hire. I'd like to say congratulations to our new Deputy Finance Director, Mr. Lars Johnson. Welcome aboard. Please stand up.
Very familiar face, am I add?
Yes, he's very experienced. Would you like to say anything? Uh-oh, I'm putting you on the spot.
Definitely was not expecting this. Thank you for the welcome. I'm pleased to be back and serving the community and working with Mark. It's been a great last two months and looking forward to continuing it.
Okay, well, thank you Lars. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on. The Community Center at 1280 East Rossar will host a Community Health Fair on Friday, October 28th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00. There will be free health screenings, exercise and wellness booths, services for seniors, and community health resources. There will be food, raffle prizes, and much more. Many thanks to the sponsors, Prescott Hearing Center, Good Samaritan Society, Compassus, Evergreen Village, and Assistio. Adults and children are welcome to this free event. For more information, call the center at (928) 778-3000 or go to adultcenter.org. Now we have a serious part. We are now fully into the 2022 election season. Here are some reminders from Yavapai County Elections Department and the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, YCSO, who are working together to ensure our local elections are secure and ballots are properly received and counted. YCSO asks citizens to please respect the Arizona law prescribing a 75-foot perimeter for no electioneering or disturbing of voters around each voting location. This includes photography, questioning, and any interference of the voting process inside the 75-foot perimeter. This perimeter also applies to ballot drop boxes. YCSO will be responding to any reports of election-related law violations. Sheriff Rhodes states, "Our constitutional right to vote freely and fairly is a basic tenet of democracy and must be protected. I will always work to defend your constitutional rights." The ballot drop box location in Prescott is at the County Administration Building, 1015 Fair Street. Remember, Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. And also, the Yavapai County Jeep Posse is celebrating 70 years of community service. They are an all-volunteer nonprofit organization dedicated to serving the needs of the people of Prescott and Yavapai County in search and rescue missions as well as county-wide wildland fire evacuations. They work under the direction of the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office and provide mobile four-by-four vehicles for their life-saving activities. They dedicate their time, vehicles, and equipment on a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week, year-round basis. They also have a communication squad that assists during these emergencies. So please, come meet them and thank them at the celebration on this Saturday, October 29th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 1200 Commerce Drive behind Kayla's Hands Park at Pioneer Park. Come learn what the Jeep Posse is all about. There will be food trucks, games for kids, pumpkin decorating, face painting, and more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We'll now have an invocation from Rabbi Susan Shanerman from the Temple of Rith. Shalom, followed by Pledge of Alethians conducted by Mayor Protem Rusing.
Thank you so much for inviting me. Let us pray. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but, "What do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen?" Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone, gay, straight, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, or atheist, is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true, and let us say, Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman can tell me.
Here.
Councilman Ventoya.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Councilman Tenney.
Yes, ma'am.
All are present.
Thank you very much. We'll now have a presentation from the Guns and Hoses Golf Tournament. Presentation of proceeds.
My name is Sherri Hannah, and thank you for being here. Chief Bonney, I'm Mayor Chief DeRay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. In 2014, the first annual John Hannah Senior Guns and Hoses Memorial Golf Tournament took place at Antelope Hills Golf Course. The tournament has taken place every year except for 2019 and 2020, the first two years of COVID. Since the first tournament in 2014, over $40,000 has been raised throughout the years in hole sponsorships and raffle prize ticket sales that have been split between the Prescott Police Department Explorer Program, the Shop With A Cop Christmas Program, and the Prescott Firefighter Charities. When I first started this golf tournament in my late husband's memory in 2014, it was very successful. Over the years, the John Hannah Senior Guns and Hoses Memorial Golf Tournament has grown to be one of the largest golf tournaments at Antelope Hills. This is a testament to our local merchants and residents who donate raffle prizes, purchase hole sponsorships, and the golfers who come out to play in the tournament, all in our community who realize how important our law enforcement officers and our firefighters are and how they show up to support them. I want to thank Bob Knutson and the management of Lamb Chevrelet, who is our official sponsor, providing a new Chevy Blazer every year as our Hole-in-One Prize. Thank you. Also goes to Gunsite and Proforce, Gunsite Academy and Proforce, who have stepped up to be part-time co-sponsors of the tournament. And also want to thank the staff and management at Antelope Hills Golf Course who bend over backwards to make sure our golf tournament is a success. I would be remiss if I didn't thank all the family and friends and volunteers that come out to help with the golf tournament, and also the Prescott Police Department, citizens on patrol. They are all there all day long, supporting our tournament. The support from our community shown to me and my children is amazing, and we are truly grateful for everyone who participates in our golf tournament. At this time, on behalf of the Hannah family, I would like to present a check to Prescott Police Chief Amy Bonney and a check to Prescott Fire Chief Holger DeRay in the amount of $2,100 each, proceeds from this year's golf tournament, hole sponsorships, and raffle prize ticket sales. Thank you.
Do you want to come out here or just stand right here?
Yeah, can you turn around first?
Okay.
So we will.
Awesome.
And can I just say, the fire department, we played this year. Holger and I played together with some of our staff, and you're lucky that we're professional public safety experts and not golfers.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. All right, we'll now have a presentation from the Friends of Jersey Lily, the annual courthouse lighting fundraising events presentation. I think we have Josh Markhauer here. Good to see you, Josh.
Nice to see you, Phil. Thanks for having me down. Lots of new faces on the council here. So for those of you that don't know, I'm Josh with Jersey Lily Saloon. I'm here representing the Friends of Jersey Lily Saloon. Thanks to Tommy Meredith 14 years ago. He started this committee, raised $500 for the courthouse lighting. I think it started in this room, looking for money to fix the black hole in front of Jersey Lily since, I mean, everybody knows we've got the best view in town. Last year, we raised $57,500 to help light the courthouse square. All of that's in due support of the community, businesses, individuals. It's huge. So what we do is three parts. We have a silent auction, a live auction, and a raffle. This year's raffle prize was, one of them was donated by the Niebeckers. It's a small version of the Less We Forget that's been installed down on the courthouse square. So, one of the things I'm here today to do is ask all of you to pull out money, buy some raffle tickets. You can have a piece of Prescott in your home. It's valued at $5,800, and honestly, it's invaluable with having that small miniature version of what's down on our courthouse square at your house. Also with the raffle, we've got a set of four Michelin tires donated by Prescott Tire Pros, and Raskin's Jewelry donated a 14-carat yellow gold heart necklace with diamonds in it. So there's kind of something for everybody. Tickets start at $25. Mayor Phil Good already donated us $200, so we thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I try to make sure I get in front of the line.
You were there.
You better believe it. That's the challenge there, Steve.
Along with that, you know, any of your raffle tickets come with what we call donor bulbs. So if you haven't been to Jersey Lily, starting October 1st, we hang up the bulbs. If you've got a company in town that you donated from council name, whatever it is, we put your name on there, or you can create your own, and we hang it on the bar through January 13th, I believe, this year. So, the raffle will actually take place January 12th. So again, we're asking you guys for some support as well as the rest of the community. We really, the Less We Forget bronze, in my opinion, is huge this year. We can't push that enough. Also, next Thursday, the 3rd, we'd love to have you all down and all of the community. We have a live auction down in Jersey Lily Saloon. Past Mayor Mangarelli will be our auctioneer, and the doors will open at 4:00 with auctions starting at 6:00. We'll serve dinner from 4:30, 5:30. It's a complimentary dinner. All the proceeds from the auction, the raffle, all of that goes to the courthouse lighting. I have a volunteer committee of about 16, so all of us put our time forward and volunteer to make sure that this happens every year and not take any of these proceeds out to fund what we do. And the last piece is our silent auction. That kicks off on this Sunday, October 30th. That's 100% online at this point, thanks to COVID, and it actually worked better. We raised instead of like 3,000 in our silent auction, I think last year was like 12,000. So, it works great. It runs for eight days online, so all the information can be found at thefriendsofjls.com or jerseyliliesaloon.com. Just find the Friends of Jersey Lily page. There's auction links, flyer for everything on there. I think all of you have flyers as well. So, we'd love to have you all out next Thursday. Also liked for you all to buy some raffle tickets, and we appreciate the community support. We appreciate your support, Phil. And actually, Phil, also, we'd love to invite you down personally to come speak at the auction if you're available. So, thank you, everybody, for your time, and I'm selling apple tickets.
Thank you, Joshua.
Thank you.
So what's your goal this year, Josh?
This year's goal is 60,000. We don't want to set the bar too high, you know.
Well, it's almost like Sergey Alexeyev, the old USSR weightlifter. Every Olympic, he always broke the world record by about a pound.
That's all we need to do.
And he did that just Olympic after Olympic, even though he was capable of probably breaking it by 50 if he wanted to. But that way, he keeps the issue at the forefront of the community, and I'm sure you'll be very successful again this year. Thanks, Josh.
Thank you all.
Anybody want to make a contribution while we're waiting here?
Pick apple pie.
Down at the bar, or you can go on jerseylily.com, and you can buy your raffle tickets there, and we'll generate your bulb and your raffle tickets on there. Just make sure to put, you know, Council Steve Sishka, and we'll do it all for you.
$300 bucks.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Why here four?
I'll do four. I'll be down.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Make that note that in a minute, so we can.
Awesome.
We can go on jerseylily.com?
If you can go to jerseylily.com, and then on the top right, click on the Friends of Jersey Lily and then raffle tickets. It'll take you right to a link where you can punch in your credit card information.
You just put on there, you'll fill out the little bulb out.
Yep, we'll make the bulb for you.
And put me in one of the best places possible.
I'll have to pass.
Somewhere over the mayor's.
Won't it be more fun to go down there?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thanks again, Josh, and I'm sure you'll have a great, successful fundraiser, and it's just a great effort, and it really pulls in everybody in the community to be part of it.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the open call of the public. Jennifer, you want to read that?
The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address council on matters not included on the agenda during the call to the public. And we have Ralph Hess as our first commenter.
Well, thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My comment relates to something that I think most of you, all but one of you, had as a goal a year ago, which was to improve the transparency and public participation in council meetings. So, I'm here to, well, first of all, you're in a position to assess how much of an improvement you made in that over the last year, but I have a couple ideas that I wanted to share with you, so here they are. One is with regard to the consent agenda, invite the public the opportunity to actually ask for one of the consent agenda items to be removed from the consent agenda item calendar and be discussed. Board of Supervisors does that, and it seems it's worked out really well. And the other thing I have is relates to the fact that who makes the consent agenda and what basis do they use to decide before you even have the meeting what's going to go on the consent agenda? And the reason I ask that is, I've made this suggestion a number of times in the past, but I don't know that I have to this council, which is, a practice in the past has been to have the identical agenda for a study session prior to voting on it. And one of the benefits to that is that when you do have the voting meeting, all of the comments from council at the study session and all the comments that come from the public are considered during the interim between the study session and the voting meeting so that it doesn't appear that council has already made a decision on each of the agenda items before you even receive public comment. For instance, today, if you can look at the voting meeting agenda, how many of those items were ever discussed previously in a study session? I don't know. But over the time that I've been observing these meetings, it seems like many times, the first time you ever see the issue is when it's presented to you at a voting meeting. And besides that, there's a recommendation alongside each issue that you approve, a motion for that issue. So, as a member of the public, I come in and I get four minutes, or five minutes, or three minutes to make a comment, and then I go sit down knowing you've had hardly any time to consider my comment, or any of the other comments from the public, or any questions posed by the council, since under the open meeting law, the first time you're going to be able to discuss it as a council is when you're all at the meeting. So, in years ago, some of you know I used to work here for the city of Prescott decades ago. That was a practice. That was a practice. The study session agenda was identical to the voting meeting, and everything that was on the voting meeting had been previously been discussed. And so, you might end up having, well, you will end up having a longer study session, but you might have a shorter voting meeting, because at the end of the study session, you can have a discussion among yourselves and say, "How many of these items do you think we can put on the consent agenda for the voting meeting?" And maybe all of the things that we're going to be talking about today would be on the consent agenda, because you'd get a consensus without a vote that, hey, you know, we're going to be able to eliminate discussion on most of this stuff, as long as it's not a public meeting or something that requires, you know, not being on a consent agenda. So anyways, I've said this year after year to almost every council, and I think it would be beneficial for the public, and I think it would be beneficial for all of the council members, so.
Thank you, Ralph.
That's my idea.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Elaine Garley.
Thank you, Eric Moore, for suggesting I come here. I represent 106th Prescott residence who live on both sides of Senator Highway near Hazely. Today, I'm requesting a pedestrian crossway with flashing lights at this intersection. Our petition is signed by these residents. To walk across Senator Highway, we have blind curve north and south of us. Most cars obviously exceed the 25 mile an hour speed limit. Senator Highway is the safest way for us to walk to downtown, which we do a lot, and to cross Senator Highway to Acker Park. I want to thank Sergeant Nathan Bartow for helping us with your speed signs and recent patrolling of Senator Highway by the police. Yesterday, I received an email from Ian Manley stating our email request was received for a crosswalk, which we sent several weeks ago. Now we wait. I invite you to drive up Mount Vernon to Senator Highway, turn left on Hazely, then turn around and go back to the stop sign at Senator. Watch the traffic and attempt to go straight across Senator Highway, either as a pedestrian or in the car. It's a dangerous intersection, and we don't want to wait for an injury or death. We've had many very close calls, and we don't want a death like Yarnell. Thank you. And here I will present the petition. I had more people calling me today saying that they didn't get signatures to me, so we could have probably gotten well more than the 106 signatures, and this was within less than two weeks' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marley. I'm sure that Ian Manigley will be presenting that to the Pedestrian Bicycle and Traffic Advisory Committee for consideration.
We'll get it on the agenda.
Lucinda Grant.
I would just like to say a few things about water quality. I'm concerned about the local water quality issues. I was just thinking, you know, you seem to wonder what to do about these things. I had some ideas I just wanted to share with you quickly. I was hoping y'all would close down the sickest wells. That would be, I thought, mostly the airport wells. And also, I'm concerned about these sprays. I know your city has some guidelines about spraying pesticides and herbicides around, and I've tried to encourage them to do more mowing and hoeing and less pesticide and herbicide spraying, because that can cause toxic chemicals in our water supply as it goes to groundwater and goes around. So please, you try to limit and reduce, and hopefully end, Roundup use especially. And the last thing I just wanted to say was, sometimes I hear in the news, places like Phoenix and LA also are wondering what to do about water, new water, and where the water is. Well, you know, the old days, it used to be, you know, drill a well. That's the old answer. And, you know, they say, "Well, where do you drill a well?" I say, you know, you get to the well driller people, and they have the dowzers, and some people don't believe in that, but it's a subtle energy thing, and the dowzers can find the underground streams, and then you don't know how deep it is or whether it's safe. But I'd say Williamson Valley Road area may be helpful as a place to put more wells and use the dowzers to find the underground streams. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Anyone else?
That's it.
Very well. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull any items from consent? Hearing none, so.
I'm sorry, I had a hard time getting my button pushed.
All right, Councilwoman can tell me.
I'd like to pull item 9A.
So that's a regular agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. That'll be the next. Thank you.
Okay. So if we have no request to pull items from consent, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8F.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Where is my thing?
Pass is 7-0.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
All right, we'll move on to the regular agenda.
One moment.
So, item 9A is adoption of resolution number 2022-1842, approving the updated council policy on membership for city boards, commissions, and committees. Oh, is anybody going to talk about this?
I can, a little bit. This was taken on primarily by the city clerk, Sarah, and she's not here today, but I did work with her a little bit on it. Essentially, we wanted to update this policy and do so in a way that made it similar to the council's policy that we had adopted recently as well. So. So, it sets up the process for removing a member of a commission or board or committee that's an appointed position. So whereas, as members of the council, you're elected and kind of beholden to voters, these members of the committees aren't necessarily beholden to anybody except for themselves. And so this establishes that they can be removed for failing to appear for three consecutive meetings, but also if, in the opinion of the commission chairman, that they do not actively participate, or that they, in some other way, negatively reflect their behavior on the commission. So in that event, the commissioner or the chairman of the commission would bring it to you as council, and you as council could vote after having an opportunity to hear both the chairman and the commissioner in question, and make a decision of whether to remove that commissioner.
Yeah, I felt this was particularly necessary. We have so many members of the Citizens Academy now, that we've graduated and worked through that program, that really have a genuine interest in maybe serving on some of these commissions and committees, and they sometimes don't have an opportunity to. So we also have some people that serve on the commissions and committees that don't take their responsibilities very seriously, and frequently don't attend, or don't participate to the extent that they're expected to, to be able to have those committees complete their missions and their responsibilities effectively for the best interests of the community and the city at large. So I felt that by kind of restating what's expected of commission committee members, that this would be more appropriate to be able to get the committees operating effectively, and then possibly allowing more people that do want to serve on the committees an opportunity to do so. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I agree, something like this is needed, but I'd like to direct your attention to the last page of the packet there, page 4, exhibit B, under section A, paragraph 4, which is in the middle of the page. I'm concerned about the sentence, "or through behavior negatively represents the board." I think that's too general, and that could actually include our private lives. And I think that that should be struck and replaced with "at public meetings involving city business." Because if we don't change this, for example, say, one of us is down at, say, Jersey Lily's, having a good time with friends and family, somebody may think that's behavior unbecoming, and it can be used against them to remove them from the board. So I think we need something a little more specific and restrictive that would not include private activities and limit it to public meetings involving city business.
And if I might address that, you're right, it does include kind of personal life, and it doesn't relate to you as city council.
No, but just anyone on a board.
And that was done intentionally, though this is your chance to tell us you don't want it that way. But it was done intentionally because there's no recall process for commission members. So to the extent that there was something so egregious, a crime, for example, in a personal life, it gave the chairman of that commission and you as council the opportunity to remove someone for those reasons. But yes, we could change that.
Yeah. Councilwoman Cantelme.
Yeah, I support generally, but I did want to talk about one specific paragraph in exhibit B, under A membership. If you go down to line item number four, the first sentence, "If in the opinion of the BCC chairman, any member fails to adequately participate in meetings and discussions related to the board, commission, committee, or through behavior negatively representing the board, they may submit a recommendation of removal to the city council." So what I propose, and I, can I pass these out, or would you mind? What I'm proposing is something a little bit more defined, and this is basically a code of conduct. And it is, it does define the code of conduct. So just take a look at that and see if you would agree with at least most of that. And I think, obviously, the last page, I think that when they're presented with this, they should also have to sign off on it, so that they understand what the code of conduct is. It's just, it leaves too much to the opinion of the board chair, because if they are allowed to do that, what if they just don't like somebody, and they want to remove them, just for no reason at all? I think we need to define what the lack of conduct would be, and this will outline that.
Keep in mind that that chairman would then have to make a recommendation to the council, and they'd have to state their case, and also, by the same token, the individual member would also be able to present their case, so that some of these potentially trivial personal issues would have to be considered. And I think the council would, if in such a scenario, would not support a removal. And then it would probably call into question the judgment of the chair. So there are recourses here. Well, I think adopting such a code of conduct would be a separate issue. And if we wanted to adopt it, we'd have to consider this at a separate time.
Yes, that's correct, Mayor. Council could either approve it as drafted, or approve it with a specific, the policy, or approve it with specific changes, but as it relates to code of conduct, we'd have to set that off. And if we wanted to approve it jointly, we'd have to put off both items until then.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm looking at the document, and I guess my question is, as I understand, some of this deals with the appointment of a chair, and like a chair of the committees potentially? Is that correct?
Well, it would put a higher level of responsibility to each chairman who holds that position on a board, commission, or committee.
I guess the reason I bring that point up is, I just, I guess, I think there's some value in allowing some of these committees to have their own autonomy, to a degree. And I guess that would be my only concern about this document as it exists now, is, you know, I think your point's well made about the idea of a chairperson having to go through a certain amount of veracity to make an allegation and come before council and say, "This person doesn't really need to be here." I guess I just, I want to make sure there's a due diligence process, I guess, is my biggest concern.
Due process?
Yes. Yeah, not due diligence, but due process. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments that Kathy made, but I do feel that it would be important that it extends not just to when they're representing the city, because, like our city attorney advised, if this person committed an egregious crime or something, then that would really affect their ability to serve as well, I think, not just when they're representing the city. So I think we need to take a different perspective.
I thought felonies were already included in other policies, that they'd be under that.
This is for boards, committees, and commissions, not for elected officials, and there isn't a recall, like you said. So I think that we need to have that stronger language in there for those situations, where it's not just their, you know, when they're serving, representing the city, but in their personal life as well. I think that's important to consider.
Well, I think, at least from my consideration, there are situations where a potential member could be active in the community, and really speaking, writing, or otherwise, that would really put the city in a very negative light. So having at least some recourse here, I think, is in the best interest of the city and how these boards, commissions, and committees operate. Councilwoman Tenny.
I appreciate the comments of both Councilwoman Cantelme and councilperson, Councilwoman Lucinda as well. But as you have pointed out, Mayor, I think that both those concerns are probably addressed in the language under, what is that, A, or sorry, let's see, exhibit B, A4, in terms of the process that it would have to be gone through in order to remove someone. It's not just a situation where somebody has a grudge against somebody who thinks that, you know, it wasn't such a great idea that so-and-so got tipsy at Jersey Lily. This has to go all the way to council, and then both people have a chance to speak to it, and then the entire council would have to vote, and the majority would have to vote for the person to be off the committee. So I feel like there's a due process piece that's built into it the way that it's written.
Yeah, because right now, we really don't have a process to deal with such a situation. You just have to wait till that person's term expires, and then not reappoint him. But some of these, you know, that could be a couple of years. And in the meantime, are they really damaging the function of that particular committee, or the ability of the city and the council to operate effectively?
Mayor, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but shouldn't the chairperson of the committee be held to the same standard through some process? I, if it's his or her behavior, that's the questionable behavior. Shouldn't other members of the committee have the ability to bring it forward?
Well, I think that's a legitimate concern as well. How would we work that into a policy statement?
And I think that we'd be willing to receive your input. I think we could do something, and this isn't in there now, but it could be that two members of the commission could then bring something forward as to the chair, something along those lines.
Well, then, we could probably adopt this policy and then recommend a amendment to it to include activities of the chair. Correct?
That's correct.
Or maybe we should bring it back at the next session.
Mayor Protem, I'll recognize you.
Thank you. Sorry. Or another option would be to bring it back in two weeks with the recommendations that are made concerning the chairman, and also include the, review the code of conduct and adopt the code of conduct, too. And have that all included at the same time.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
I was just going to ask for clarification on that, on the code of conduct issue. Would it be helpful to be able to define some of the code of conduct, through a code of conduct that would be either, you know, an additional amendment, however you do it?
Yeah, and I think that helpful depends on what perspective you're coming from. So leaving it wide open like this gives you, as council, a lot of leeway in determining what that behavior is. And I think that makes a lot of sense for a lot of people. But if you want to remove some of the discretion and make it clear for commission members of what their conduct would look like, then a code of conduct makes a lot of sense. So I don't want to, I think that it's just a determination of policy for you, and I don't want to see it helpful, one way or the other, at least legally.
Can I give you this copy?
Well, I don't think that we necessarily have to immediately make this decision. We could certainly have that particular section of exhibit B, under A, membership, item IV4, reworded to include a chairman position, and maybe adding, I think you're right, adding probably two members who bring concern forward. That would cover that. And it also gives us a little time to review this code of conduct, should we be able to adopt it the way it's drafted, or possibly consider that as a separate item, because we may want to suggest amendments to it as well.
Thank you. Do you want a motion?
So if you would like to make a motion to postpone the decision on this to date specific, then I would entertain such a motion. We have a public comment here before we move to that point.
Deborah Thalassidis.
Deborah Thalassidis, Prescott, Arizona. I appreciate your willingness to take a look at this a little further, and I just wanted to ask if you would consider some clarification. First of all, to the attorney's point, that the due process is already provided, I believe the language as it is now written says "may." So that does not imply that the due process is automatic, so if you could take a look at that. Another question I have is, there doesn't seem to be a role for the council committee liaisons, and it seems like they might need to be involved or consulted in this. So another thing for you to consider. As far as leaving this wide open, so council has leeway, I might be comfortable with this council having that kind of leeway, but what about the one that comes after you all? This policy, the one that's in place now, was adopted in 2011. We're over 10 years using that policy, so whatever you put in place could be around for 10 more years, and you may not be sitting in the seat. So think about that when you craft the policy. Lastly, I do think it's a good idea to talk about behavioral expectations. A lot of cities do this. There's things like attendance, collaboration, mutual respect, and conflict of interest. All of those things absolutely need to be addressed. But, and I think any criminal activity and defining that needs to be addressed, because that is addressed for all of you in the statutes. But to just make it broad and open, I think you're going to deter participation. So those are my thoughts. Thank you for considering them, and I'm glad that you're going to take a closer look at this.
Thank you, Deb.
That is it for public comment?
That's it.
Ralph Hess, sorry, you came in at the last minute there.
That's fine. Yeah, Ralph Hess, Prescott, Arizona. A couple of the comments have already been made, but, and I want to follow up with Deb, that yes, that the current policy is, it's written, is that the, you may consider and invite the commissioner, who is the challenged one, to come. Doesn't say that you shall bring the commissioner. So it's going to be actually up to the discretion of the council, even hear about what this supposed behavior or inadequate participation actually consists of. And that's one of my objections, or two of my objections, and I urge you to reconsider, is it's not defined as to what is inadequate participation. Does a person not talk enough? Do they vote contrary to the chairperson constantly? And the fact that crimes would be an example of behavior negatively representing the commissioner's actions, that's not in your policy. What it says is behavior that negatively presents, represents the committee, or board, or commission. And there's no guideline there for the chairman, so that the commissioner, or committee member, or board member knows what kind of activity is going to be deemed to be...
Good point.
...inappropriate, or negatively represents the board, committee, commission. And if you want to have examples of crime being a part of the behavior, put that in the policy. Or what Ms. Cantelme just indicated, if you have a code of conduct, and then you can just indicate that a violation of the code of conduct would thereby be deemed to be behavior negatively representing the BCC, and you could incorporate the two. Those are my comments with regard to exhibit B. As to exhibit A, I want to touch upon what Councilman Montoya said about autonomy of these boards, committees, and commissions. You're updating the policy. You vetted these people who you are putting on the boards, committees, and commissions. You have confidence that they're going to... You have confidence that they're going to be giving you good advice or they're going to be giving you good recommendations, which ultimately you can reject. If you have the confidence in these people to be giving you advice, recommendations, I would think you would also have confidence in them to be able to select and elect their own chairperson and their own vice chairperson or their own co-chairpersons. And by doing so, you give them the opportunity, those members, to build some type of team rapport among them because they're selecting whoever's going to be in that position rather than having it imposed upon them. And also reflects the council's confidence in them to make that type of a decision. So I would urge you to modify Exhibit A, allow the, or invite the BCC, the boards, commissions, and committee members to select their own chairs, their own vice chairs, and also make, really make significant changes in this discretion, that unfettered discretion that you're giving to the chairperson to make recommendations about kicking a member off. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph. Well, it's pretty clear that I think we need to spend a little more time drafting this.
Yeah.
And whether it's prepared to be reconsidered at the next meeting, I'm not sure.
Want to make it?
Maybe we should just postpone a decision without a specific date and then have the city clerk and the city attorney look over the definitions. I mean, some of these things can be quite subjective.
And if I might suggest a study session might be a good opportunity to discuss these because I know that the city clerk doesn't have necessarily pride of ownership here on this either. It was just about getting something before the council to give us feedback on it. I think in a study session might be a good opportunity to get feedback on all this because it's really policy-driven, not necessarily form-driven at this point.
Yeah, that makes good sense. All right, well, should we?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to postpone Resolution Number 2022-1842 until we have a study session to discuss proposed amendments and a code of conduct as in Exhibit C.
I think that's a sufficient motion.
Yes.
Second. Motion is second. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, good. All right, we'll go to Item B. City Clerk, if you want to read that.
Yes. Okay, Item B, approval of city contract number 2023-076 with Fan Contracting Incorporated for a concrete maintenance program project to improve sidewalk connectivity, roadways, and parking in the vicinity of the American Legion and Prescott Library in the amount of $899,546,000.
Big number.
Good afternoon, American Council. Tim Sherwood, Capital Program Manager, Public Works. The item I have for you today is actually a twofold project. It's part of our city's concrete maintenance program and will improve sidewalk connectivity and increase on-street parking in the area from, on East Goodwin, from Marina Street, past the library, up to the American Legion site up at Pleasant Street. As I mentioned, it's kind of two distinct projects that were bid together as one. The American Legion portion includes installation of new sidewalk, Americans with Disabilities Act ramps, or ADA ramps, and driveways. Currently, there is no sidewalk on the south side of Goodwin that connects that side of the street to the area around the library. The only sidewalk is on the north side of Goodwin Street that runs pretty much all the way from Mount Vernon down to the square. The library portion of the project includes the installation of a new sidewalk. The current sidewalk includes a historic timeline. It runs very close to the building. There are some areas of disrepair. The primary source of that is it doesn't get any sun in the wintertime. In order to keep it accessible, they have to use salt to melt the ice that deteriorates the concrete. It's also not ADA compliant. There's stairs in that sidewalk currently, so there's accessibility issues there. And sometimes the project, the sidewalk actually gets closed in heavy enough snow and ice events. We will also be adding 12 additional parking spaces. I'll pull that up for you as well. Along the library frontage. Currently, there are five parallel spaces near Marina Street and then there's a drop-off zone that's further up the hill. So we'll be adding 17 total diagonal parking spaces in this block.
Tim, can you show us where the sidewalk is going to be?
Yes, the new sidewalk, there we go. The new sidewalk is, here's the new handicap ramps here at the corner at Marina. The sidewalk will run along the edge of curb and come up here. The existing sidewalk right now is along right here. There will also be a set of stairs that will allow accessibility from the parking spaces down to the sidewalk. Currently, there's no accessibility through this area at all, short of going all the way to the corner and coming back.
So you'll maintain that timeline?
Yes, sir. And it'll also provide the opportunity for, to repair some of the damage that's been done over the years.
So the timeline will stay in its current location?
Yes, sir.
But then you'll add a sidewalk adjacent to it?
We're adding a sidewalk adjacent to the curb. So a lot of downtown sidewalks have a sidewalk, then a parkway, then the back of curb. This sidewalk will be adjacent to the curb out by the parking spaces.
And then those parallel parking spaces will become diagonal?
They'll all become diagonal, yes, sir.
Add about how many net new?
A net gain of 12 spaces just in that block. As I mentioned before, there's currently five parallel spaces along this portion right here and then the curb kind of slides back and there's a drop-off area currently right now that the library uses. Working with the library through the design, we pulled that curb out and added these additional parking spaces.
Well, you have, will they be two-hour or unlimited parking?
That's a good question. I would, right now, the parallel spaces down here are two-hour spaces.
Well, since they're primarily used for patrons of the library, I think they probably would qualify for a two-hour restriction.
We will discuss that with Ian.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
You know, I'm really excited to see this project move forward. This is a very high-profile project involving connectivity along this street between the American Legion and our library and also all the way to downtown. And I personally, many times, have pulled up there on Goodwin and parked in front of the library on the street. And I'll get out and I have to either walk on the street or go around and then try to access the sidewalk. And it's like an obstacle course because there's a slope with river rock and I have to pick my way down, which I wouldn't even attempt during the winter. So I'm really thrilled to see this. And plus, there's an addition of 12 parking places. So I think this is a real exciting project and for the money involved, it's a lot more than a concrete maintenance program. And I was just wondering, how, do you have any idea how long this would take to complete?
If you'd like, I can go through the rest of the presentation. You guys got ahead of me this time. So like, as I mentioned, we, right now, we have 120 days construction timeframe. The contractor is chomping at the bit to get this project started and has assured us they'll have it wrapped up by Christmas. I do realize there are some other events that lead up to, through the whole holiday season, but they're going to do their best to get this knocked out as quickly as possible. As I mentioned, the library project was actually a project that we bid out back in the spring, but we only got one bid for it and it was double the estimate. And so we decided we pulled that out. And that's one of the reasons we packaged it with this project was to hopefully get some economy of scale. As the specs were written, it was a cumulative bid for both projects. It wasn't, so there's a potential that a bidder could have been the low bidder on one portion, the library, for instance, and maybe not the low bidder on the American Legion. In this instance, they were the low bidder on both portions of the project. So the American Legion portion of the project is $392,023. The library portion was $507,523. So we did advertise the project in September. We received three bids in, on September 22nd and Public Works is recommending a worth of bid to Fan Contracting in the amount of $899,546. Staff has received written confirmation of the bid from Fan Contracting, verification of license bonding references, and past performance of previous municipal projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. The city's standard construction contract will be used for this project and funding is available in FY '23 from the Streets Fund. And with that, I will answer any more questions that you guys might have.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I was driving that route today, Tim, and I was noticing near the American Legion, and it's not illustrated here, but...
Yeah, there are two separate plan sets. That's why this one...
Yeah, but I noticed, like you said, there's no, there's no sidewalk on the south side of the road and like where I suppose the sidewalk will go, there's a fire hydrant. So I imagine they're going to move some utilities as well as fire hydrants and things like that.
The utility we have to move and Unisource is actually doing that work this week.
I saw them there today.
Their gas line was very shallow. It was only about, it was less than a foot deep. So they're relocating that gas line, getting it down to three feet deep. Our plan for the American Legion is we'll take the sidewalk around the back of the fire hydrant.
Okay.
In lieu of, in lieu of moving it. We have enough room between the last driveway and the corner to be able to do that. Plus, we have plenty of right-of-way there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little shallow for a gas line anyway, isn't it?
Actually, how we kind of discovered it was my project manager and I were out walking it. There's a driveway that's been kind of open for months. And it didn't really make sense and we tried to go notify the neighbors. We kind of looked at it and there was a black pipe sitting there and it happened that the Unisource gentleman was there locating. So we asked him to verify it and sure enough, and fortunately, Unisource jumped right on it and within two weeks' notice, they're out there working on it.
Mayor Protem.
Oh, I have a question about those beautiful honey locust trees that are along the street frontage there. Is there any way they could be saved or moved to another project?
As I mentioned, the two large ones, and I think the reason they're larger is because they get sun pretty much all year round. The ones that are smaller that are near the library don't see any sun in the wintertime. Those two are going to need to come out due to the configuration of the handicap area and we just, we're running out, we don't have a lot of room in that area there. As I mentioned in my email reply to you, that we could have an arborist come out and look at them and see, determine the viability if they are able to be relocated. We would have to determine a location to do that. I don't think they would fit in the area that we have to work in in this project, but it's something we can certainly look into.
Okay.
And then I think the smaller trees further up, we can look on a case-by-case basis where they're, what their proximity is to the sidewalk. We also don't want to have a tree where, that the roots are going to become a problem for lifting the sidewalk or branches that are impeding pedestrian traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Kentelme.
I have an empty lot a half a block away from there. You can plant them there if you'd like to try. Question, is Goodwin getting any narrower? Because I do walk that almost daily. Will the actual width of the road from...
The driving width itself will get a little narrower to accommodate the angled spaces. That block narrows up a bit from the block between Marina and Cortez already. So we couldn't do diagonal parking on both sides of the street. There's just enough roadway there. But we do have a, I believe the plans call for a 13-foot travel lane going eastbound and 11-foot travel lane going westbound. So we have adequate travel lanes on both sides of the street, even with the angled parking.
Any plans to go any further because there is that, now you'll just have that one little section?
There is one little section. Thank you. I looked, actually looked at it when I was driving over. There is one small section between Pleasant and Mount Vernon. There is sidewalk on the north side of the street, similar to the rest of the block, but there is, and we'd have to work with the property owners in there too because it's, we could make it, probably make it work, but it's, it was something we'll have to plan for.
Well, let me know. I know them really well.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Tim. When I first looked at this, I thought, wow, that's a very, very high cost just for putting in a sidewalk. But looking further into it and the ADA and the liability conditions that currently exist absolutely have to be solved. And then I know the American Legion there has been concerned about their parking on that parallel part of the street. So some of their older members have to walk out onto the street and then make the turn up towards the post and particularly during the wintertime, that's dangerous for them. So this solves both of those problems and I think there, it's certainly necessary. Any other comments or concerns? Any public comment on this?
The library director is here. Would he like to make a comment?
Thanks, Roger Saft, Public Library Director. Yeah, I'm really excited to see this project go forward as well. It gives us additional parking, which has always been a problem with the library that we don't have enough parking. It also makes negotiation for, for those people parking on Goodwin Street a lot easier to get into the building. When the snow comes, it's going to be a lot easier for us to make, make safe passage up that street as well, so.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Roger. I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-076.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, moving on to Item C.
Approval of city contract 2023-065, professional services agreement with Arizona Communications Network for operation of the city's public access channel.
Great, Mr. Mayor. John Heine, Community Outreach Manager. Just going to give you a little bit of a history lesson about the public access channel for a minute before we get started. Back in early 2020, the nonprofit Prescott Media Center, or PMC, board asked the city to take over the operations of the public access channel 64 for airing of public meetings, creation of video content, local programming. PMC Board had decided to dissolve the organization at that time and they felt that the city would be the appropriate steward of the public access channel for Prescott. At the time, the city did have a contract with the Prescott Media Center, per annual contract of about $96,000 at that time. In September of 2020, council agreed to have the city take over management of Channel 64 effective January 1st of 2021. In order to achieve this, staff endeavored to hire a consulting group to manage the channel and continue the operation of the public access channel 64. Given the short turnaround, the fact that this was a professional service, staff was able to negotiate an agreement with Rob Milligan, who was a former station manager for the Prescott Media Center, and Lynn LaMaster, who was currently at the time operating Copper State News. They partnered together and presented a proposal. Council did review that agreement for two years later in 2020 with Arizona Communication Network. The first two years of the contract are expiring. We currently are in a contract at $78,000 per year. The proposed new contract before you is for $90,000 for the first year and then a six-and-a-half percent increase for the next three years. So it should be noted that during the time of the contract, they took over in January of 2021, probably about April or May of that year, the city severed ties with a contractor who had been doing updates for our social media, COVID-19-related updates specifically. And we parted ways with that contractor, kind of left staff in a lurch with trying to keep the content going with the Facebook page. I did talk with Rob and Lynn about it and they agreed to take that aspect on, actually putting content on the city Facebook page that you see today. It was outside of the scope of the work of the contract, but in good faith, they agreed to do that for us and they've been continuing that effort since that time. So the proposed agreement continues the core services that Prescott Media Center did, but it does include the public, the social media content creation. Rob's unique skill with broadcasting equipment and video production, combined with Lynn's writing skills and social media content, make them very well qualified to perform on this contract. And we felt that they performed well throughout the two years and certainly assisted us with increasing the scope work. I think Rob just stepped out of the broadcast booth to be here for the meeting, so usually he's behind you all, making sure that the broadcast is live. It's still going right, Rob?
Yeah.
We're good, okay. Just want to make sure. So they're here today to answer questions. They actually have done a lot of research. They provided me with a lot of background about cost analysis, what other municipalities pay for this type of service. Some do it in-house, some contract like we're doing. So we do have some good information if you have questions and we're happy to answer questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, John. I know originally I was a little skeptical about some of the value of the opportunities to record the events that are upcoming and have those posted to Signals AZ and some of the other media outlets and then also some of the updates in our Facebook and things like that. But I gotta, gotta tell you, I've heard from a number of people who really appreciate hearing those updates and... hearing those updates and finding out what's going on in the city. So I've become, I've been won over. So I appreciate the work that Lynn and Rob both do, and considering where we were a few years back and where we are now, their expanded offerings and support, I think it's valuable. So with that said, I'll entertain any other comments. Mayor, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. First of all, it's good to see Lynn back. She's been, for those of you who don't know, she's been a longtime member of our media family here in town. I'd like to play the devil's advocate here for a few minutes. As you know, we just heard a very somewhat heart-rendering presentation about our city staff condition, and it's basically in crisis. And I just would like to make a few statements about this contract. Number one, how many people here have watched the Prescott Community Access Channel this week? Raise your hand.
Yeah, that's two.
That's two? That's your job, isn't it? So as you can see, I think the community access channels were a big deal back in the 80s. It was very important for transparency, because there was no other mediums for the public to watch our government meetings. But I wonder if it's, the access channel has gone the way of the buggy whip, because we have Zoom, we have YouTube, Facebook, we have our website, tweets, Instagram, we have free radio shows, and we have many other mediums out there that people prefer to watch on Facebook, or Zoom, or stream. So I, one of my other concerns is this contract is not going out to bid, and apparently it's never been out to bid. Another concern is, why is it for three years? Why don't we just do it for one year and see if maybe we can take on more things in-house? And it's something, I mean, we got some big numbers here. We transfer $7,500 a month to the media company, and you know, that's, that would be an incentive for a policeman to come up here, to attract a new policeman or fireman. And so the total of the contract is over a quarter of a million dollars. We could use that money in other ways for housing stipends for our, for our staff, or maybe incentive bonuses, retention bonuses, so they don't get poached by other communities. So for a quarter of a million dollars, is this something that we want to proceed with? And then finally, I did request through Mr. Heine some sort of a financial statement, because as an elected official, we have a fiduciary duty to be the watchdogs over our citizens' tax dollars. And the financial statement, from what I hear, was not provided. And I know that it's a choice, that they don't have to provide a financial statement if they don't want, but I think it would, would have been a lot more helpful to this discussion if we did get a financial statement to see how this quarter of a million dollars is going to be spent, or at least what our past investment was spent. So those are just some of my comments, and nothing personal. I think we have a wonderful group of people here that, that help us with our media, but is it time to take a look at this and maybe update this and bring it, bring it out of the 80s, our, our media? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify a few things?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think Sparklight provides that public access channel at no cost.
That's correct.
The franchise agreement.
We've talked about maybe relabeling it, so that when people are scrolling through the 65 channels or whatever, they have to try to figure out what to watch. If they know it's city of Prescott activity updates, maybe there'd be more people watching. But go ahead, and you can respond to some of those concerns.
Sure, just for clarification, I agree with you, Mayor Protem. We certainly are in an age when, you know, a lot of people are cutting the cable, as it were. So we, but the, the means that we have now, actually what's been done over the past two years has exactly done what you said. We've taken it out of just Channel 64. You now see this channel, these meetings available on the city's Facebook page. Two years ago, it was on the Prescott Media Center Facebook page. It was not on the city Facebook page. So we're bringing it in-house, if you will. Also, we are very close to putting this entire channel and all of the programming, that whole stream, on the city website, something we were not able to do with Prescott Media Center. We have new capabilities with our servers and things like that. So the work that they do on the city Facebook page also is done on Instagram. So again, we have, we're definitely expanding this. It's not just the cable channel any longer.
Very good. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to comment that the $90,000 budget that we have, considering today, I think is money well-spent. I appreciate John's clarification to Councilman Rusin's questions. It is obvious that Lynn and Rob are going above and beyond in improving the communication capabilities of our city and getting information out to the residents of our city more than ever before, over multiple platforms and mediums that we were not previously using. And I think to suggest that we could move these duties in-house to a city that is already, has 47 full-time positions unfilled, and staff that's overworked and underpaid, according to our presentations earlier today, is not realistic. I think this is a bargain, and I don't think when we enter into an agreement with a contractor, certainly we don't need to see their P&Ls. That's their business. They're performing a service, we're paying them a fee, and we don't have to see their financials.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you playing the, yes. But good media companies don't grow on trees, and I've seen the results of kind of a half-baked media company doing the job that we were requiring before these guys came on. And John, you can correct me, but I think that you're much happier in this situation than you were in the previous one.
We're doing a much better job.
Okay. And the quarter of a million dollars, Mayor Protem, that was over the three-year contract period?
Right.
Okay. Okay, those are all the comments I had, Mayor.
Any other comments or concerns? Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
And I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve City Contract Number 2023-065.
Second.
A motion is second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item D.
Item D, approval of City Contract Number 2021-181A4, an amendment to City Contract Number 2021-181, with Fan Contracting for Miller Creek restoration work associated with the Sundog trunk main phase C2 project.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Capital Program Manager, Public Works. I am bringing for you today is the Second Amendment to Meetings. It's actually Amendment A4 for the Sundog C2 project. I'll give you some background again. The project was originally bid, or originally awarded by council to Fan Contracting in June of 2021. Started the project, was delayed several months, eight months in total, due to material supply issues. This amendment is for Miller Creek restoration work associated with the installation of the sewer trunk main. Work will, complete work will include complete creek restoration and trail reconstruction along Miller Creek from the Lincoln Avenue Low Water Crossing back to the Creekside Apartments. During construction of the sewer trunk main, staff and council were contacted by several members of the community with concerns about Miller Creek and the restoration after the sewer trunk main was installed, including called the public by Mr. J. Ruby on April 26th to bring the concerns in front of council. Staff held a public meeting on June 16th of this year with residents, Prescott Creeks, Mr. Michael Byrd, and staff to develop a planning and implementation strategy to restore vegetation. Correct me if my memory is not correct, but I believe Councilman Moore and Councilman Montoya also...
Just me.
Okay, I, I, we do, we do so many of them, but I know we had a couple council members attend that meeting as well. And I think, I'm sorry?
I was out of town.
I was there.
I do remember you were there, Mr. Warren. For some reason, I thought Councilman Montoya was there. And I think we had, we had really good feedback from the community at that point. Staff has been working with the Prescott Creeks Group, Recreation Services, including Chris Hoskins in regards to the trail restoration, and Fan for the revegetation and trail restoration work. The amount for the amendment is $151,623.83, and funding for the amendment is available in FY '23 from the Wastewater and Streets Fund. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I just want to, I want to extend like my kudos to you and staff for, you know, I think there was some concern about how this project was proceeding from this neighborhood, and the responsiveness that you guys displayed, and the willingness to kind of set up this meeting in the neighborhood. I wasn't there, Eric was. But I think it's, it's a lot of good faith, and it goes a long way to show the community that, you know, I know there were people who were concerned about bringing a call to the public to this, this meeting, but I think this is evidence of, here's how a call to the public works. Like, if someone brings an issue, we're not going to have a dialogue back and forth with them. But more importantly, and this is what I tell people when they reach out, and I know it's not something I can directly help them with, I often point them to call the public. I think some, some of the other members of council do as well, because I think it's important to get an audience in front of us, but it's also important to get an audience for staff to hear and say, oh, wow, this is something we can kind of tackle, or maybe it would be appropriate to put together a neighborhood meeting. So I just, I'm really grateful that you didn't let those concerns kind of wash away. You, you took them and addressed them head-on, and I think the community, in my impression of the feedback I've gotten from the people in this neighborhood, they're really grateful that you took those efforts. So thank you for the hard work to do this.
You know, Councilman Montoya, I agree with that. I think this was my intention all along, to be able to create this call to the public, so the public does have a voice, rather than just think, these decisions are made and you're just going to have to live with it. So sometimes their legitimate concerns have an opportunity to be voiced, and then we can respond to them. And sometimes even staff may not be aware of the impact of some of their projects on the neighborhoods. So I think I agree with you. This is a good example of how the call to the public does benefit the community and the council large. Mayor Protem.
Is someone from Prescott Creeks here?
Michael Byrd.
Yes. Would he like to speak?
We can have public comment here.
Hi, I'm Michael Byrd, Executive Director for Prescott Creeks. I think, I think Tim did a great job of presenting the situation. About the time that Mr. Ruby came to City Council, maybe slightly before that, he had reached out to us. We had heard from at least one council member, if not multiple council members. And I think from that point forward, we started having a dialogue with Public Works about what strategies might be employed to address the concerns of the neighborhood. So we're pleased to be part of the process still, and look forward to being out on the ground this winter.
And it sounds like it's going to be kind of a community project. You're going to involve a lot of engaged volunteers.
Yeah, we, we don't have volunteers signed up, but I think that any project that Prescott Creeks has done over time, we really approach it from trying to involve the public, because there are service learning opportunities, and participants essentially develop a sweat equity stake in the project, whether it's a green infrastructure project in town, or a revegetation project at Watson Woods Riparian Preserve, or this project. And so that's our hope, is that we can engage the community members who attended the public meeting, have been here in front of City Council, get them out there with shovels in their hand. We invite all City Council members and staff to join us in that endeavor. But I think, you know, we will try to get as many volunteers on the project as possible for, for those very reasons.
Great, thank you. Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sounds like we're in good hands.
I want to thank Councilman Montoya for his comments about Call to the Public, and I appreciate the mayor speaking to that as well. The gal that came this morning and this afternoon and spoke about the crosswalk on Senator Highway is an example of that, where she approached me, and I said, you know, you really need to come to Call to the Public and, and make the, the mayor and the council, as well as staff, aware of this situation, because it is a safety concern. That's a very busy road. I do have a concern with the scope of work that I'd like to ask a question. Page 82 in our packet, I'm not sure if you have the packet, so you're on page 82. Under the scope description, it says, "Trail improvements with fence and AC removals, revegetation, and new chain link fence with razor wire." I'm asking why we need razor wire and a green belt that's a public space for recreation?
It's the replacement of a new fence that was put on the Salvation Army property, or yeah, their property, it's protecting their property.
It's their property.
Relocation of their fence. There's a, a section of the trail, especially towards the apartment section, where erosion has become an issue. The trail is very close to the edge.
I've walked it recently.
Yeah, there's some large boulders there and stuff like that. So we're going to bring that trail away from that point and restore, and restore that, that portion of the creek to stabilize it. But that is replacement. The asphalt removal is part of the Salvation Army property as well as the fence.
Okay.
And so we are, and we are working with Salvation Army as well to, for, for an easement through there, so.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I can appreciate your concerns, though.
Yeah, I don't want to see razor wire on a green belt.
So they already have a razor wire on their fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is that Gillette's chick or Harry's?
I'm sorry?
Is it Gillette's chick or Harry's?
I'm a Harry's guy, so.
Never mind.
Did you make a joke up there?
I think so. I didn't get it, but. Oh, it was, okay.
All right, any other comments or concerns? Any other public comment?
No.
Michael, thank you for showing up, and I'm sure this will be much more aesthetically pleasing and quality location for the people in the neighborhood there and others. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2021-181A4.
Second.
A motion is second. Please vote.
Pass the 7-0.
All right, that concludes our meeting today, and I suppose with all the discussions we've had regarding the federal government, it's probably appropriate that I read this favorite quote from President Ronald Reagan. The nine most terrifying words in the English language are, "I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." So this meeting is a jerk.